Evening, Mr. Chair.
Evening, Mr. Chair.
And, uh, the Honorable Board. Thank you for, uh, all you do for this town. Uh, putting it out. Um, last, uh, last Monday night in your meeting during the public comment, there were some, um, comments being made. And I have no problem with people making comments about anything. I believe that the freedom of speech and deliberation in debate is so essential to the entire process that no matter what anybody has to say about me, or you, or anybody, they certainly have the right to do that. And I would never restrict anybody from doing that. Nor I would hope nobody else does. But there was some troubling comments that came through. And when I read the, uh, Goffstown News, I saw that I made front page, top of the page, which, you know, may recognition this business is pretty good. Except sometimes they look like they're trying to skew things in a way that may put you in a different light than what was really happening. But I understand newspapers got to sell newspapers, even though they're free. They still, they still need people to read these things. But I just want to clear up a couple of issues here. One, as I was reading this Goffstown Code of Conduct, because that was brought up that I may have actually violated some things in here. I read this, and you may want to take a look at this also as a Board of Selectmen, because it says the town officials, whether elected or appointed, paid or volunteer. And the reality is, a paid town official is much different than an elected town official. Or an elected, uh, elected official. I don't want to use the word official, but an elected. A paid employee of the town does have specific duties and different, and specific things and ways that they should act and must act in order to keep their employment. An elected official, um, I think is representing the electorate, the town, everybody that voted him in especially, or her, and those that didn't. So sometimes, in making very difficult decisions that we're all faced with on these boards, sometimes that is going to affect how some people perceive whether or not you have violated any of these codes. I just might want to suggest that there's certainly something good to read and to understand and to try to go by. I wouldn't say that they are cast in stone, especially for those who are elected. But they're good to follow. They're, it's good practice. But again, as was stated in here, um, there's nothing that compels anybody to follow them. They're just a guideline. So as long as you understand that. I was also reading it that somebody felt that, uh, although there was a violation, it certainly was not a violation, in my opinion. And I also made it public that I had contacted the town attorney. And I just wanted to, this is probably one of my main focuses of the evening, is, these are the emails that I received from Brian Rose, the town planner, that afternoon. I don't know if you're privy to this or know about it. But I was told that I made phone calls, I spoke to him, and I think Mr. Gross even wanted to know if I, you know, who authorized me to spend this money, um, to contact the town attorney at the town's expense? Well, it was Mr. Rose. Mr. Rose is a subordinate of the town administrator. Um, and by the way, the town administrator was CC'd on these emails. So the question remains is, did the town administrator read the emails? Did the town administrator know that her subordinate was contacting the town attorney? And does the town administrator know that the planning director suggested that I contact Bill Drescher, the town attorney? In the emails, and I've got copies for each of you here, and just as part of the record.
Those that you passed out, John?
Four, yes, they are. I'm gonna just need one for myself, I'm gonna need to read it. Oh, no, there you go, there's, there's another copy.
Thank you.
Oh, if that's, you're welcome. Thank you, Mark. I hope I copied it up there, but...
If you need more, I'll share with somebody.
Okay. Anyway, we can go to the bottom, because this was kind of a contention. You know, for those of you that have known me for a while, you may know that I'm a little bit more responsible and just pick up the phone and do something that I'm not supposed to do. I try to, try my best, certainly, in my professional life and certainly in my public life. But, uh, John and Richard, and she's addressing Richard here, is Richard Meany, he's the vice-chair of the planning board. As you're all well aware of, if you've looked at your packets, there is a letter from Roxanne Hunt asking John to recuse himself from voting on her proposed amendment. I'm writing to you as the chair and vice-chair of the planning board to find out your direction regarding holding a short performative meeting with the town attorney for him to advise the board of the issues around conflicts of interest, disqualifications of members. I've spoken to him, and he has told me that he's available to come to Town Hall at 6:00 prior to the meeting tomorrow evening in order to advise the board members as to how the conflict of interest statute may or may not apply to you, and as board members determine the best course of action when a question of conflict of interest has arisen. Please let me know if you would like me to set it up and request that the rest of the members come to Town Hall at 6:00 P.M., that we can meet for 30 minutes and, uh, on this and head over to the high school afterwards. This meeting would be considered a non-meeting and would not be required to be noticed, a noticed meeting. Please let me know how you think I should proceed. Sincerely, Brian Rose, town planner. Danny is only one of us first. So, that was the first one that came over to me. I wrote back to him and I said...
John, John, I'm sorry, what was the date on that one for?
Yep, the date of that email was the, um...
It was Thursday, wasn't it?
Thursday.
Yeah, oh yeah.
Or Wednesday, Wednesday. Must've been Wednesday, the day of the vote.
Wednesday, January... Well, since wanted to go over to the high school afterwards.
Yeah, that was the eighth, and he sent this email on the eighth. Yes, Wednesday, yes, that's right, thank you. And then on the next email, I sent back to him on January, on Wednesday the eighth, after he had sent me that, and I said, "I read the packet but did not see the letter," because we had some things in there and I missed one page, "until I looked again. I will seek advice from the town attorney and make my decision after that." So, because someone wants me to step down, because someone wants to recuse myself, because somebody thinks I have a conflict, doesn't mean I do, and doesn't mean I will. So I thought that was the answer, and he would either bring him here or somehow, whatever. And then he contacted, then he emailed me back, um, on the, uh, right, or at, right after that. And he said, "I just called Bill Drescher to inform him that you would like to speak with him. He said that would be fine. He mentioned to me that he has an in-house appointment at his office between 10:00 and 12:00 today, but would otherwise be there at the office. He asked if you would defer, he called you when he has a chance. So let me know, I'll send him your telephone number onto him, or if you, if you just want to call him, his number is 673-9400." Pretty clear to me how it went down. Wasn't me making any phone calls, you know, out of anyone's permission, didn't need a vote from the board, didn't expect that I needed one, because I had the subordinate of the town administrator giving me permission to do that and actually furnishing me with that phone number. In the paper, and again, this is just a paper, um, it says, "Town Administrator Stuart Rose to Heickel did receive a copy of the code of conduct..." Uh, town received, uh, I'm not aware, um, I, I'm sorry, I didn't circle that one, but somewhere in here, the, the feeling was that, that I did, I did call, that, I, yeah. And then he contacted town attorney without an official planning board vote authorizing such a communication. That was from our town director, our, our director, our town administrator. So, here I am, got permission, got full authorization to do this, under somebody, under his full authority, under his official authority, upper hand capacity. So I took the liberty to call the town attorney, and I discussed it with him. I disclosed everything to him, how I, uh, my, my situation of both of the requests, but especially the one that was focused on with 75 Daniel Plummer Road, because that's really the one that I had a question of. I didn't know. But I did mention both of them to him. We talked about, and we talked about what we needed to talk about. And after, and, and litigation had been finished for a long time, everything was done, settlement, I received, uh, a few dollars, uh, in the settlement, because I was out a substantial amount at that point. I signed off on it, she signed off on it, litigation's done, over with, as of last August. Just to clear that up. Because that word is out there too, that there may be more things pending, but, uh, again, there is not. So, in coming here tonight, not to, uh, not to beat a dead horse, because, you know, I can't prevent what was gonna happen, you know, live TV, at any moment, anybody can start saying whatever they want to say, and you have to kind of sit there and listen till you realize what's happening. And that's kind of what happened during the last, during the planning board public hearing. I have my questions about that, I need to figure out how we're gonna work this out, but somehow we voted to change zoning of a property without any testimony, without any speaking, without anything from the petitioner. Anyway, that happened, it happened, it voted, and that's the way it, and that's the way it went down. No recommendation for the ballot. So this article that I read is just riddled with speculation, falsehoods, untruths, and, uh, and accusations that I'm not pleased with. But I've gotten a pretty tough skin over the last five years, so I'm pretty good at handling anything. I just thought I'd bring it to your attention that the recent phone call was made, and really, the only thing that I think you need to deal with is the phone call, I don't take it upon myself to cost this town a dime unnecessarily. And, uh, and it looked like I was being, it was, it was said that I did that, and I just wanted to make that clear for the record, the public record, and for all of you. I, I call, I call all of you friends, but also, I mean, I like you all, we've known each other for a long time, and I'm certainly not trying to dismantle anything that we're all working very hard to do on a daily basis. And that is to make a much better community in the county area. So with that, I just wanted to set the record straight, and if you do have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them, so...
So, John, if I may?
Yes.
Be so informal.
Sure.
Yeah, the newspaper article is what the newspaper article is, that's, we have no control over that, you know, they can, they can print whatever they choose to print. So that, the real issue is, you know, whether or not there's authority to contact the town attorney and use town funds to do that. And so you, you brought forth these emails, which I haven't seen before, as first as I've seen them, and I appreciate you bringing them forward to us so we can look at them. But as I understand and correct me if I'm wrong, your position is that through these conversations with Brian Rose, who is a town employee, um, there was direction through these emails to go ahead and contact our town attorney?
Absolutely.
Okay, I just want to make sure I'm quite up there.
And, and the administrator was CC'd, so, so everybody should've known, whether they did or they didn't, you know, can't help that, but everybody certainly was in the loop. And I just wanted to make that clear, that I didn't...
Yeah, that's good. I just want to make sure it's clear what your position is, and I appreciate you bringing those emails forward. Is there questions from the board members or just I guess?
No, please don't.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, have a good night.
Thank you, John. Anyone else you'd like to make a public comment this night?
Yes.
Nice job. My name is Amy Beller, and I'm on Tom Coughlin Street. And I wanted to speak a little bit about the planning board meeting of January 9th. It was horrible. People were being badgered, and my husband was questioned as to where he was getting 70 signatures, what color, any, pretty much. Exactly how many people do we have getting signatures? These signatures were all verified, and we were one out of 70. They were all verified from the people who do the signature verifications. And so I would, I'd like to bring that up, it was horrible. And, um, I, I felt really bad for Mr. Heickel, because he was being accused of all sorts of stuff, and it was just, it was just horrible. It was like the town was teaming, teaming up, you know, to put us down, okay? Because we believed in one thing, and the town doesn't believe in, in the same thing as we believe. And it was, it was bad, it was bad. So, this is why I'm here this evening, because I think some of the decisions made that evening were incorrect. So I am asking, number one, that you take off Amendment 13 off the ballot, um, the one that says to try to, um, change the zoning of tax map six lots, one to two, one to three, one to four, one to six, one six one, and one six two, from industrial to, um, the commercial industrial flex district. Okay, this was put on the ballot without the owner's knowledge and without the owner's presentation, so it shouldn't have been, even been on the ballot. It's the EDC that put this on, and that's wrong. You shouldn't just put something on without asking the owner, number one. And number two, okay, that, um, you change Amendment Number 14, Amendment Number 15, and Amendment Number 16 without reflecting the planning boards either recommending or not recommending, because there was a lot of misinformation that night, and a lot of information that was not, uh, brought up 100%. And the first one is, okay, that I want to speak about, is, um, is the Amendment Number 16, to amend 75 Daniel Plummer Road from residential to, to commercial. And when Brian Rose was steering of the planning board on their decision, okay, he did not tell the whole truth, okay, and he did not show the planning board, um, all of the information that he needed to, okay? If, I brought you copies of this, okay? On that side of Daniel Plummer Road, all the houses are zone R2. So you are spot zoning if you, if you do this, okay? You are gonna be putting perhaps a, a gas station, or even an adult video store in the middle of a residential lot. True, the other side is, I think, mixed, commercial, industrial, but on that side, it's all, all residential houses. The townhouses at Country Squire, excuse me, um, they may be zoned commercial, but I guess in the olden days, um, that's how they zoned townhouses, but they're actual, all residential homes, okay? They're, they're townhouses. Now, you have beautiful homes on that side of the street that are worth $250,000, okay? And there's also, there's also an abut, poor guy, the one that lives on Seven Ridge Street, he abuts 75 Daniel Plummer Road in the back, okay? Is he gonna want a gas station or something terrible in, in his backyard? You are gonna hurt these people's properties. And the sad part about it is, they were never notified, they don't even know. So these are things that I got from the assessment online, okay, if you want to pass, I didn't have time to make copies from all of you, for all of you, but if you want to pass them, um, so you're spot zoning. And this was recommended by, uh, the planning board, but they didn't know the whole story. And the petitioner wasn't even there to, um, say, you know, what she wanted to do, whatever, because she left, because I guess John didn't step down. And with all this said, okay, because, okay, there's a lot of, um, bad blood, I guess, between myself and Mr. Devanzer and, um, Barbara Griffin, I was denied, I believe, my requests. And my request wasn't as severe or as drastic as this one, okay? I'm on, um, I think, let's see, Amendment Number 15, rezoning 12 Joffrey Street, okay, from residential two to residential small business two, all right? I didn't have a chance to speak up too much, because we spent so much time on, on the issues that the town and, and everybody else had with John stepping down, and, um, the misinformation that they got on Mastro, that I didn't have a chance to show my pictures or speak up. But, um, this is what I put up with, okay? This is what I see in fact, from my backyard. I abut Mr. Paris's, um, business, okay, which is a combination garage, landscaping, um, repair shop, body shop of cars, and if, if this lady was able to get her petition recommended, I definitely should've got mine, because I'm not asking for much, okay? I'm already abutting, um, commercial on two sides. This is my backyard, this is the beautiful site that I see from my backyard, and, um, this is a house, uh, this is adjacent to a car wash, okay, which is commercial, and I just wanted to mention, this car wash is open from 6:00 A.M. to 10:00 P.M., and it does get noisy sometimes when the cars go through, and it's early in the morning sometimes, but anyhow, I haven't complained much, I'm trying to be a good neighbor. Um, I might've complained when he first put it in, but anyhow, I'm, I'm making do, okay? And again, um, you know, this is the nature of Mr. Paris's business, um, that's, that's what we put up with anyhow. Again, that's his nature, that's, he has the permit to do that, so I'm not complaining about what he does, I'm just complaining about the fact that I, I think I was turned down, okay, for the wrong cause. And this is, again, this is what I see from my backyard here. I abut another commercial property, it's not being used right now as commercial, it's being used as residential. So with all this said, that I, I'm asking that you take all these amendments that happened that evening and not put either recommended or disrecommended, or whatever, however that goes, just leave it blank. And I think, you know, you, you are the selectman, you can make this decision. And this way, the people, people can research the information, and maybe even watch this tonight and see what we're, we're talking about. Okay, so these are pictures again, here. Um, and there was misinformation regarding to what, um, maybe Joanne Duffy said, and maybe, um, Chris NATO, and maybe Mr. Devanzer, regarding properties on Mastro having problems with grandfather clauses and all that. That's incorrect, okay? Actually, I'm not a conforming lot, my lot's 90 by 100. Never had a problem with, with my mortgage, got a mortgage. The house next door is residential in a commercial lot, and it's been sold five or six times, never heard they had a problem with, um, with mortgages either. The problem with mortgages is with the plan Panarville. When, um, the town is gonna take your front yard and your backyard, they're taking land from you, so if you have a 100 by 100 lot, and they're taking 50 by 100 for, for back alleys and front yards, um, that's where you're gonna have a problem, because the bank is not gonna have as much of a property with the land on it. They gotta be missing land, so it's not gonna be as valuable, so that's where you have problems. And we change, we change land ordinances, zonings, every year. Every time you put an article on the petition, um, or an article on the ballot, I should say, you're changing, whether it be allowing, um, bigger, bigger garages, or allowing chickens, or whatever, you're changing the zoning every, every year. So, if there's a question, they can always go back to the town, there's records of this, so what you were allowed to do, when, and, and where, okay? So that was, that was not correct, so that's incorrect information, okay? And I have another issue too, my sign issue. I'm gonna let, um, I've been working with, um, with Nick regarding the sign, so, because I've spoken a lot here, I'm gonna let him summarize what happened with the sign.
Well, if I may, I'd like to get back to the zoning amendments that are being proposed.
Okay.
So the planning board is proposing to make amendments to the zoning ordinances. And you have issues with Amendments 13, 14, 15, and 16. Do I understand that correctly?
Correct, yes.
And these are the amendments that came from the planning board.
Yes.
Obviously, obviously will be recommended by the planning board on ballot.
Well, mine was, was, um, was not recommended. Mine was not recommended, and the other, the other three were...
What do you want yours? Which is your, what is yours?
Okay, mine is the one on 12 Joffrey Street.
Which amendment are we talking about?
Okay, let me look at this one again.
15?
What's mine, 15? Yes, 15. So all the others were recommended, except for mine.
The final 15 is rezoning all of Mastro to commercial.
So which one was the proper number for?
For Joffrey Street?
Because mine said, well, just go by the address, then.
12 Joffrey, it's under 16 now.
Oh, because it was 15.
Yeah, the first article's always the election of officers, and so, planning one started, number two.
Oh, okay, can you rename, renumber the ones? How about the district to commercial industrial? What was Amendment 13? That was, I don't know, Island Pond Road, I don't know, it has a lot of lots, okay? The one that, um, they're trying to pass off without the, the landlord knowing, the owner knowing, lots one two, one three, one four, one six, one six one, one six two, from industrial to that horrible commercial industrial flex.
That's Article 14.
Okay, so that's 14 now, okay?
Yeah, map six lots one dash two, one dash three, one dash four, one dash six, one dash six dash one, and one six dash two, that one. That is now 14.
So Mastro to Henny Bridge is 15 now, you said, right?
Yes.
Okay, and then mine is, what, 16 now?
Yes.
I bet that was my first one.
And all went up one.
And 75 is number 17 then? 75, definitely.
Yeah, 16 is number 17.
Okay, so the ones that I would like, okay, um, put on the ballot without saying recommended or not recommended, and let the town people research, because the information they got that night was wrong, and it was a horrible meeting, coyote, you know, it was chaos, and it was horrible. So just put them on the ballot, I say, without saying recommended or unrecommended. And I would definitely take off the, um, the, the first one there, number 14, because the owner doesn't even know about that. That's horrible. It's the, um, EDC that put that on. So take that off and put 15, 16, 17 without any recommendations or not recommended.
Okay, yes, Michael.
Yeah, you, you made a statement that the owner didn't know about the property.
Well, as far as I know, there was question about that, okay? There was question about that, because I followed it a couple of meetings, and the owner didn't even come in, didn't even come in. The, the couple of meetings, the, the first time that they, they put this, the EDC put it to the planning board, the owner was not there, and there was question as whether or not he knew about it, and on, uh, January 9th, this past meeting, he wasn't there either.
Now, the one that you were working on was to change the Mastro to commercial?
I was, I, I did not work on it, I was one of the 70 people that signed that.
Okay, well, you were the lead petitioner.
Well, maybe I was the first one, but there was, there was a bunch of us that, that requested that.
Well, okay, but the question I have, how many properties were included on that?
I didn't count, I don't know.
About how many? Any idea?
No, I...
Okay, let's not get into the...
Well, the question is, the question is...
What was the question then?
Is those property owners weren't there, and they didn't know about it, somebody else was rezoning theirs, what's the difference?
Well, first of all, okay, I assume that, um, when, when we submit, okay, a petition, I assume that the abutters would know, the abutters would know.
The owners?
Owners, abutters would know. When, when a petition, okay, would be submitted, I would assume that whoever, it would make, it would make sense, okay? If you're proposing this and you're bringing this to the town, legally you can do it, okay? You would think that the, the town planner, the department would notify everybody. I really honestly thought that everybody would be notified. Because usually, when you build something, or you want something done on your property, your abutters know, number one.
Okay, and we've heard your concerns, and we'll, we'll take those into consideration relative to the amendments. I think you had another issue you wanted to...
Yes, okay, I'm gonna let, um, I'm, I'm gonna stay quiet for a few minutes and let Nick, you know, summarize the sign issue.
If I would. I, I plan on bringing that up under old business. This is really public comment, so I would ask if you have any other, to the, to the chair, if she has any other comment, we can close our conference and move on, because we, I will be discussing this under old business.
Well, just quickly, though, I'm very disappointed when I, um, I was not able to go to the budget, um, meeting, okay? Last, was it last, this past Thursday, I think? I was not able to, and I was very, very disappointed, because, um, I was, I was planning of, of having my sign be on the article, as I was told it would be. It would either be coming from the excess fund, or it would be on the ballot, okay, as an article. This is what I was told. And I did everything I could, all right? I've been working, I submitted, um, a petition to you folks with all the signatures, tons of signatures. It had about 400 people, okay? And I do have a copy of the petition here someplace, the first page. But it was a petition saying that the people wanted a sign. From May, you can see me on film, from May to September, I came in, you know, almost every week, "Give us a sign, give us a sign, this is what the people want." You know, I'm just a common person, I don't know the loopholes, I don't know the rules, but I do the best. And I was going by how you folks were steering me, okay? So you assigned Nick to work with me, okay, which, you know, he did his very best, we worked together. Um, I got, um, estimates from, I'm not sure, I think it was the, we started out with a company that you had dealt with for the fire station with those little signs that, and then I had gotten another estimate from Stewart Sign, a company that's been in business for like 25-plus years. I got an estimate from, um, is it Sousa Signs, I believe? Okay, yes, I got what, the one, okay, it looked like the fi, the one at the police department, okay? And then, um, I had gotten another es, okay, these were all submitted, I believe, in November, in November. And there was come and go regarding all these, okay? We didn't want to, the town had spent too much, so... We didn't want the town to spend too much, so we were going to be grateful for whatever we could. And you had gotten a good idea, saying that maybe we can use the already existing poles and wires from the school, so it could cost us less, and put the sign there and share it with the school. I said, great. So then we went on another path, that we decided that maybe we could upgrade that and maybe go local, okay? We did have an estimate with Mr. Sousa, and it was a nice, you know, a nice sign and everything. And then while we wanted to give another local business a shot, too, okay, Drucher Sign. But I had gotten, I followed up, I did everything I could, okay? And in November, again, it was, all these estimates came in. And then, what, middle of December, we had another estimate on the sign. And we just saw the sample, I believe it was not this past Saturday, last Saturday, in the rain, you know? I spent hours, and I spent a lot, a lot of time with emails, contacting you, contacting all the people. Now, we, I was told, and I'm sure this is on tape, that again, that the money was either going to come from the money that we already have in the budget, or it would go on the ballot, okay? And from what I heard, Saturday, we could have, we had time to put it on the ballot, because the last day was Tuesday, okay? And I had said Saturday, and when I left you, I said, I don't have to write anything up, okay, because you folks can write it up better than I do. This is what I understand. And also, you had mentioned that you had not spoken, I think, to Diane McCarthy from the school system, or you had spoken to her, and you were not sure when you were going to be able to meet with her, something to that effect, right? And then I said, I said, Nick, I said, should we have two warrants on the ballot, $30,000 and $15,000? I said, what if one gets voted in and one doesn't get voted in? I said, we're going to wind up with half a sign. I said, that doesn't make sense, you know? So I said, can you put it, you know, with $30,000 on the town budget, all right? I said that. I recall I said that. Can you put it, you know, on the article? Okay, and we left as it was going to go in Tuesday, okay, or Monday or Tuesday, because Tuesday was the last day. And when I was looking at the selectman meeting Monday, there was a marker, a place for it. So I took it under assumption that it would go in, because this is what I had as an agreement, you know, a verbal agreement, that it would go in on the ballot for $30,000 on Tuesday, because there was a place for it. And I watched the budget meeting, I was not able, and my article was not there. That's not right. This is against, okay, I believe the laws, okay? Because the people want this, all right? I'm a 30-year resident. This is the first time I'm asking for something, all right? And I'm not the only one. There's how many people that signed that petition? So you're going against, okay, a lot, a lot of people. And then you times all the money that these people pay, 400 people, okay, maybe a $5,000 apiece, how much is that? Don't you think they deserve a $30,000 sign, okay? Or at least a chance to vote for it? You know, I've been accommodating, okay? If you don't have, you know, you want it to go to vote, even though we're going through all this, let's go to vote. Not all of a sudden, the people don't even have a chance to vote on it, which is not right.
Just clarify, Ms. Bennet, when we met on Saturday, as we were leaving, I explained to you that I needed to get in touch with the chairman of the school board to find out, they typically have meetings on Monday nights when we do, to find out if they could put their half of the warrant article. I sent a message to Mrs. McCarthy, received her answer back on Sunday evening, which I reported back to this board, that they did not have a meeting that evening. They would not be meeting until the 20th of January, which was after the deadline. So they had no possible way of meeting to put a warrant article for their half of the sign.
Okay, but again, I had brought up that point. I said, I said, that doesn't make sense. $15,000 on one side, $15,000. I know we're supposed to share it, but you put it in for $30,000, and then you get your money later on, somehow, some way. You know, there's ways of doing it. So what happened? You know, that's not right. It is not right, all right? That's what I'm saying. And now we have to find some way to fix this, somehow, some way. Please fix this, so you can accommodate the people.
Yeah, we appreciate your comments. We are going to take it up under Old Business later this evening.
Okay. Could someone call me? Could you call me and let me know what the outcome is?
Sure.
Okay, I appreciate that. Because really, the people are deserving a sign, and you're going against their wishes, okay? And I'm not sure if you want to pass this along regarding maybe.
Sure, we'll get it done.
Okay. Did you have the other photocopies of all the other nice houses?
Yeah, so I'll get them later.
Did you want that back, or? Okay, no, I made the copies for you, okay?
Thank you. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Is anyone else who'd like to comment this time? Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Good evening.
Bill Lynn, 292 Mastro Road, Goffstown. Despite all that's been said here this evening, reference to what Ms. Bennet had to say, she's right. We have flawed meeting. And it wasn't a flawed meeting last Thursday because, that flawed meeting because of a chairman. It was a flawed meeting because of the agenda, and not the agenda for the evening, but the agenda of the people stating flawed statements such as Mr. Devanzer did and others in the audience, trying to take down the chairman. And because of all the arrogance in doing so, focus was lost, totally lost. A meeting that was supposed to be for the people, by the people, by the elected officials that we put in there, did not happen. And I blame some of the people in here. I blame the people at the table that evening. And I blame people in the audience. I'll name Scott Russ, for example, who couldn't stop. He had to go on to the next day with a 91A, which was useless. Ms. Bennet makes a good point. We really need to get these items on the ballot without any for or against, okay? I agree with that. In spite of Chairman Heike's situation and being attacked by a local print publication, we held off on our article at Goffstown today, because we're still compiling, because he was not treated right in media. Not the first time that paper has done that. I was glad to see Chairman Heike come in this evening and expose what should have been out there anyway. Not only from the people in Town Hall, right up top, right up to the town administrator, Sudas Russo, who is carbon copied on these emails. And my question, which I don't expect an answer here this evening, because it's public comment, is, were those emails reviewed, and were they ignored by the town administrator? Were those emails overlooked and not seen by the town administrator? Where was the action inside 16 Main Street to bring this whole thing to a close and make a sensible statement out of it with regard to how Chairman Heike was authorized to call the town attorney by a subordinate of the person on top? That's my statement there. With reference to all the wires and cameras I saw at the meeting the other night, if you remember, I was escorted out by the police department in a school board meeting last year for having one little tiny camera for audio purposes. I left, didn't want to cause a scene. I had three or four attorneys calling me from around the state, let's sue them, let's go after them. You've been deprived of your freedom of speech and your rights as a journalist. I said, no, because that's going to cost the taxpayers money, okay? I think it's time to make it very clear with the 800 miles of wire and three cameras that were in that center portion where my one camera was all night, is that I'm not necessarily going to ask for an apology, but I want this town to keep an eye on what in the hell is going on around here, okay? If you see someone like a Phil Pankos act out of line, such as he did that night, calling the police, disrupting a meeting, delaying it, somebody has to step up to the plate in this town, speak up, and act accordingly. As it is now, this Town Hall's out of control. The people run this town, and they're not being allowed to run this town. The people elect the officials to come into this town and speak for them. That's not happening in many cases. I commend Selectman Capasano, wonderful man. Got the veterans in here one night. That was a wonderful personal agenda. We've got to get rid of the personal agendas that's going on in this Town Hall. And I'll refer to Brian Rose's desk drawer. I'll refer to Plan Panardville. I'll refer to Ready, Set, Go. I'll refer to the people who are on the Goffstown Industrial Corp. as volunteers. The crap's got to stop. Somebody needs to operate in this building with their eyes open and stop the crap that's going on. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else you'd like to comment?
Just quick.
Sure.
Quick. Okay, Gabe Better again, 12 Joffrey Street. I think the town planner, and I think this committee, okay, owes Mr. Heike a written apology. And I think they owe my husband a written apology for what occurred that night, because we were badgered. We were, it was terrible. It was a terrible meeting. And I think a written apology, VA, the newspaper, would be, would be nice, if that's possible.
You're talking about the planning board?
About the planning board, yes, yes.
Okay, thank you.
And you really should consider reviewing what Mr. Rose has been doing, okay? And maybe give him verbal warnings or even fire him, if that's possible to do, because he's been misinforming, and he's steering his agenda, not the people's agenda.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you. Let's get back to it.
Thank you.